All right. Good evening. Welcome to the March meeting of the Niskuna zoning Board of Appeals. Will you please call a roll, Mr. Shiketti?
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Chairperson Hope?
Here. The first matter on the agenda is a review of the February 2024 meeting minutes. Has everybody received a copy? Mr. Daly has made a motion to approve the February minutes. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the February minutes? Having heard no discussion, Ms. Shiketti, will you take the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Abstain.
Ms. Pacheco?
Abstain.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Abstain.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, the minutes have passed with a vote of four, four yeses in one of the three extensions. Will you, Ms. Shiketti, will you call the first matter on the agenda for this evening?
Appeal by GE Vernova for a variance from Section 220-17A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property of 2690 Balltown Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the IR Research and Development Zoning District to construct a new building exceeding the height limit for new buildings. Section 220-17 Height Regulations A states, "No buildings or structures shall exceed the height of 35 feet above the average finished grade adjoining the building unless otherwise specified in this chapter. The finished grade of artificial berms or similar earthen structures created for insulation or other purposes adjacent to the building shall be disregarded in the determination of the average grade. As proposed, the building is 54 feet high, feet above the average finished grade. Therefore, a 19-foot height variance is required. Forty-two notices were mailed out, zero responses. We have a county referral and a planning board recommendation."
Yeah, okay. The county referral states that the county approves of the proposal dated February 6, 2024. And the planning board memo to the zoning board states that, "At a regular planning board and zoning commission meeting held on February 26, 2024, the planning board reviewed the appeal by Charles B. Dumas, Esquire Agent for GE Renewables North America, for a variance from Section 220-17A of the zoning ordinance. The planning board made the following recommendations. Effect on the comprehensive plan: The planning board voted unanimously 6-0 that the proposed height variance would have no effect on the comprehensive plan. Suitability of use: The board voted unanimously 6-0 that the proposed variance was suitable for the use in the IR zoning district. They noted the building is a special need, will be approximately 2,200 feet from Balltown Road, and will not be visible to motorists. They noted it should not be overly visible to the adjacent bike, public bike path either. They also stated the proposed building would be shorter than a few of the existing buildings on the GE Global Research Center campus and would be shorter than the proposed cryogenic building that was approved by the planning board and by the zoning board of appeals in 2022. They felt that in this zoning district, on this existing unique site, a building of this magnitude was a suitable addition. Recommendation: The board voted unanimously 6-0 to recommend that the ZBA grant the height variance as proposed."
Will the applicant, the representative of the applicant, please come forward to state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name's Charles Dumas. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lemery Chrysler. We're located in Albany at 677 Broadway. I represent GE Vernova, and I have with me this evening Carl Platt, who is the project manager and facilities director for GE Vernova. I also have with me Owen Spoelstra from CT Mail, who is the civil engineer who did the work on this project.
Mr. Dumas, can you tell us a little bit about your, the application, and specifically what steps were taken to mitigate the need for the variance that's being requested this evening?
Yeah, this, the project site is 195-acre portion of the GRC that was subdivided in November of last year to accommodate the restructuring within GE. GE Vernova is the Energy Division, former GE Power, that's been spun off from the other aviation and aerospace division. The site is, right now, improved with an office building, a 22,500-square-foot office building, and a 78,000-square-foot facility known as the Research and Learning Center. The proposed building is 26,760 feet, and it's a proposed addition to the existing learning center. The site is improved with 337 parking spots. The planning board has granted a waiver for 91 spots, and they're shown on the site plan as bank spots. The, Laura, could you put up the cross-section of the building?
Mr. Dumas, I guess the question that I was interested in a response to specifically was, why do we need the height variance? What is the purpose behind the height variance?
Yeah, and that's, that's where I'm going here. Yeah. So, this is the front of the proposed building that was shown on the depiction earlier. This is the peak of the roof, which is 54 feet, and it slopes backwards. As you can see, there's a bridge crane inside. And the buildings at the GRC are shaped and sized because of the activity in it. The science that will go on in the building was developed at the GRC. It's direct air capture. It's a proven technology, and the purpose of the building is to scale it up and to make the technology available and useful in the marketplace. In order to move the apparatus and materials around within the place, it's necessary to have this crane go across the top. It's called a bridge crane. And you can see the motor for the bridge crane is up here. The best we could do is minimizing the pitch point here at about two feet. And accordingly, it's the minimum needed in order to maintain a proper roof pitch and structural element to it. So, it's really the bare minimum in order to make this building doable with this activity inside.
So I understand from what you're telling me that the applicant has already taken steps to mitigate the need for the variance to the extent possible based upon what's going to be happening inside, which presumably is lifting heavy stuff?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Is there any person on the board who has questions?
Good evening.
Hi.
We had the pleasure of meeting informally.
Yes.
And I, you know, I'm sitting here, just a couple of quick questions to make sure I got it right.
Sure.
The front of the building's going to have the GE logo on it, right?
GE Vernova logo.
Right, the GE, what the locals call the meatball, and then the GE Verona. Are that, is that going to be lit up in any way?
No, I do not believe it will be. The lighting for the site is mostly Ballard lighting, and there's some lighting over some of the mandors on the side. But there's no site lighting like Yankee Stadium.
Got it. So, the meatball and the GE Verona is not going to be lit up, so no one, so at night, you wouldn't see that at a distance or on a bike path or anywhere else?
Right. That is correct.
All right.
My name is Carl Platt. My residence address is in the town of Colony, 246 Sand Creek Road. And no, that won't be lit at night, and that particular face faces away from the bike path. You wouldn't, you wouldn't see it if it was lit.
Okay, next question, if I may. Without, of course, disclosing any proprietary details, but the carbon capture that you're working on in the building, is it going to generate noise?
No.
Any humming?
No.
Clanking, clattering?
No.
Thank you. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question for you. The reason why you need that height, from what I've read here, is so it operates functionally.
Correct.
And you're looking for 19 feet.
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. Mr. Dumas, in the application materials, there was a seeker short form included, and I noted that on number 17, that it was missing a description of storm discharge. Now, this is, I just want to clarify for the board and the audience to understand. We know that the roof slopes towards the back of the building and that there is no specific drainage structure, and it was claimed on the form that the water runoff does not go on to adjacent lands. But even per the diagram that was up there, the section, there is a canopy on that side over a mandor. Is there anything that's going to prevent icicles, snow, and so forth to stop that from crushing that canopy? Because I've seen that in a number of buildings around here. So I would just be concerned about that. That's more of a building question, but it, still, the question remains about how the water is coming off the building, and then where does it go?
Yes, exactly. At the time the seeker short form was done, I don't believe that the site plan engineering was complete, but I can tell you that... Yeah, why don't you leave that, and I can, yeah. Okay, so, so this is the front of the... Very well, thank you. So, this is the front of the building, and it slopes backward this way. Water is collected in the back, and this is stormwater detention over here. It will flow and be processed in this area. If you require any more detailed information, I can have Owen from CT Mail flesh that out for you.
It was more a question of making sure that there was some kind of capture system on the site, as was claimed in the, in the form.
Yes, yes, there is. It'll all flow to collection at this point, and then down to stormwater detention here.
Okay, I would still suggest, as I know about construction, you want to put something up on the roof so that the things don't just fall on that. Okay, okay, a gutter. And could you describe the materials that are facing the building or enclosing the building?
Well, the front of the building is, as you can see, is mostly glass, and that was the subject of some discussion at the CAC. This is a glass area, and the purpose of this, by and large, is to provide something striking. This site will be visited by potential investors, by government officials and so forth, and the idea is to have this striking and impressive. At the CAC, there was a concern expressed about the glass being too clear and possibly being a danger for bird strikes. But the architect has assured us that it will not be clear glass, that it will have the necessary opacity for purposes of avoiding that. The remainder of the building, I think, is essentially steel. I can't describe it more than that. Carl, maybe?
Got to come up to the mic.
The siding on a building is going to be a metal insulated panel? So it'll be metal on both sides, inside and out, with three inches of insulation sandwiched in between.
Okay, and one further question. You already described that the activities that are happening inside will not be noisy enough to transmit through the building. Is that the same for any kind of mechanical systems that would be providing fresh air, et cetera, ventilation?
The mechanical systems for the building are industry standard. There's nothing other than the normal HVAC-type systems.
That wouldn't be producing additional noise, et cetera?
No, and it's useful to know also that the way the building is to be graded around and back, the HVAC units, HVAC units will be ground-mounted, and because of the grading, it kind of operates like a berm and a sound attenuation associated with that.
That brings up one more thing, I'm sorry, one more question. Is there a generator associated with this building?
I don't believe there is. No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that has any questions on the board?
Mr. Chairman, one, so please bear with me, because I am not an environmental attorney, but in just briefly, but it is our job to include environmental impact as part of our assessment. There was only one thing here that kind of raised an eyebrow to me, and maybe it should, maybe it shouldn't, but I need you to address it. As far as endangered species that may be on the plot, on the land, I see the bald eagle listed, which is near and dear to my heart. So can you tell me what, if anything, you've done to either assess or address that concern?
I don't believe that it's a material concern at all.
Okay.
We, we had a thorough vetting of the environmental concerns and questions with the CAC. We made two appearances there. That frankly didn't come up. I do know that because of the proximity to the Mohawk River, there are eagles that have been spotted. But I don't believe that this action, the construction of this addition to the existing learning center would have any impact. There's certainly not going to be any nesting disturbed as a consequence of that. The area that this building will occupy is, by and large, unforested. There will be the need to remove some trees behind it, but that's not an area where there's any evident nesting of eagles or other endangered species of any kind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone else on the board who likes to be, have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions, and my colleague asked most of the question that I have in mind. Thank you for all the answers. This building looks beautiful, by the way. The question I have, and I think you mentioned it, how far is it exactly from the road? And how far is it exactly for any resident living nearby?
Yeah, so it's approximately, and I believe that's reflected on the site plan, Laura, it's approximately, yeah, here it is, to Balltown Road. It's nearly 2,000 feet. To River Road, it's, I think, some 3,300 feet. And to the nearest residence, which I believe is maybe up in, up in this area, right up here, I believe that's around 2,000 feet. Now, we did submit, together with the application, photographs taken from the entry to Balltown Road, and also, also from the bike path. Having some thought on that. And, interestingly, the, the existing high bay building at the learning center is approximately 65 feet. And that's not visible at all from Balltown Road, certainly not visible from River Road. And from the bike path, it's just barely visible. And just really in one or two spots. And so, at 54 feet, we believe that the DAC building, by logic, just wouldn't be visible at all.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, and I think this will be, your request here today is 19 feet from one side. From the other side, if I recall, it's only six feet, correct?
That's correct, just because of the slope.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Maximum, maximum of 19 feet.
That's why I want to clarify that one side is 19, because of the slope, then it's 60.
Further mitigation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any other further questions? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against this application? Okay, we have, Mr. Dumas, if you could let this individual speak. Sir, if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, everybody. David Hogan Camps, connecting Metroplex Development Authority, also a town resident, 1392 Ruffner Road. I just wanted to say, from a Metroplex perspective, we're very excited about this investment by GE. From a resident perspective, I'm very excited to have my children go to buy the bike path, and I'm a little unfortunate we can't see the buildings. I'd like to explain to them this very interesting technology that they're working on. As they discussed, they are really doing everything to minimize the variance request at 19 feet. And, you know, I've done a lot of environmental reviews as well, the bald eagle. We're very happy to see it come back to the Mohawk River area. Nice to hear they're not going to impact the nesting area. And again, we're very supportive of this continued investment by GE. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard for or against the application? Having heard no further comments, is there anyone on the board who wishes to make a motion for or against the application?
Mr. Chairman, I read this thoroughly, and I went down River Road, and I went down Balltown Road, and went the whole nine yards. And I have a, in front of me, the buildings in Jeep, on GE plot there. The reason, I don't see an environmental impact. I don't see an impact in the neighborhood. I don't see an impact on the roads. I don't see anything but to accept this, the way you people laid it out, because it was laid out perfectly, in my, in my humble opinion. And I know that, and I talked to some people about the 19, 19 feet. You need that to make it function. And that's all the reasons I state. That's why I approve the applicant.
A motion's been made to approve the application. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard no discussion, Ms. Shiketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes, and I want to applaud the applicant for, again, the productive and big research on doing the whole project.
Mr. Dolman?
I'm going to vote yes. I find that the benefit cannot be achieved by other means, as it's a requirement of the business. I don't find it's an undesirable change in the neighborhood. I fight by it all the time myself. I do find that this is a substantial variance. I, I am satisfied that there is not going to be an adverse environmental impact. And while this is self-created, that is not determinative, so on the balance, I vote yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, and I'll just indicate, this is a very unique piece of property in the town. There is a long precedent of granting these height variances to accommodate GE's use of the property. The applicant has explained that the benefit of having the building can't be achieved without the additional height. While this, this building in any, probably any other part of the town very well could create an undesirable change in the, in the character of the neighborhood, given the unique sighting of this particular build, that's not the case. Obviously, the request is substantial, but in the context, again, in the context of this particular parcel, it's unlikely to have any, at least the height variance is unlikely to have any adverse physical or environmental effects. And while this certainly could be construed or is self-created, that's not determinative of the application. So for all those reasons, I vote yes as well. So the variance is approved, seven to zero. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for comments.
Ms. Shiketti, will you call the next matter on the calendar, please?
Appeal by Mary and Sean Wilkinson for a variance from Section 220-25B-1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2451 Hilltop Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District to install a six-foot-high fence exceeding the height limit in the front yard. The property is a corner lot. As defined, it has front yards along Hilltop Road and Van Antwerp Road. Fence Section 220-25B-1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six-foot-high fence will be located in the front yard along Van Antwerp Road. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. Eight notices were mailed, one response, and a county referral.
The county referral for the March 18, 2024, deferred to local consideration and states no significant county-wide or intercommunity impact. The letter states, "To whom it may concern: We would like to express our opinion regarding the appeal made by Mary and Sean Wilkinson to install a six-foot-high fence in their yard. We strongly support their decision to install the fence on their property. As you know, Van Antwerp can be quite a busy road. In our opinion, it seems dangerous to have a little protection, to have little protection between the road and their private backyard. Aside from having more privacy, safety is one of our biggest concerns. Our children will be playing in their yard with their children, and knowing that someone will not be able to hop the fence in both directions puts our minds at ease. Please consider the safety of our children and animals, as well as the privacy of the families when you make the decision. Thank you, next-door neighbors at 2455 Hilltop Road." I can't actually read the signature. That's all we have.
Will the applicant please come forward? Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Can you state your names and address for the record, please?
Sean and Mary Wilkinson, 2451. Yes. Yes, Sean and Mary Wilkinson, 2451 Hilltop Road, Niskuna.
You just speak a little louder tonight, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no problem.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about your application, the need for the application, and what steps you've taken to lessen the need or mitigate, mitigate the need for the variance?
Sure, so we've reviewed videos and minutes of these meetings. I'm sure you all have heard countless reasoning for fence variances. I do think there's a few reasons, hopefully, why we're different. First, during construction, the town mandated a rain garden on the left side of our property, right around where the variance is being requested. We moved it in September. There's been standing water on that side of the house in that rain garden for the whole time we've lived there, and I don't really see that receding anytime soon. And that was due to town action mandating for the new construction, having that rain garden on that side of the house. And we would, you know, appreciate adequate fencing around that, especially as our kids start to play in the backyard. We have two young girls under two. I think, Laura, we sent some exhibits earlier today where we have some pictures of that that might help you understand what we're talking about.
So this was new construction as of, when it's?
End of September.
September 2023?
Yes. So on the, on the left side, it's a little bit tough to see here, but we have some call-out boxes here about where that rain garden is. You can see there's a few inches of standing water over there, and the red is where the fence line would be. It might be a little bit easier to see it on the bottom exhibit, actually, Laura. It might be a little bit easier to see it on the bottom exhibit, actually, Laura. Thank you. And also during construction, the town required us to keep some trees, which we are in favor of. We certainly don't want to take anything down. If we were to put the fence per regulation, having it go straight off the back-left corner of our home, it would come into contact with one of those trees, mandating us to take it down, us incurring additional costs, and not wanting to take that down either. I don't have it pictured here, unfortunately, but if we were to follow that initial regulation, it would run into one of the trees that the town did mandate us to keep during construction. And we don't want to take that down. It's a nice tree in our backyard. But we do want to have a fence up for our children. And then lastly, just general safety concerns. I think that's probably the most important for us. As our neighbors mentioned, there is a bit of a changing character, we believe, of Van Antwerp Road. I'm sure you all are familiar with how backed up Balltown gets from the Co-op lights all the way back towards CVS where you turn on to Van Antwerp. We see that becoming more of a cut-through for people to get to other parts of town. There's been some notable accidents in the town, unfortunately, recently. One on Van Antwerp, not too far from our house. And we want to make sure that with a four-foot fence, I know, you know, no fencing might provide, you know, stopping a car, but if there's a four-foot fence with young kids playing in the backyard, we would hate for our children to, you know, accidentally distract someone with a ball going over the fence or something like that. So we want to make sure that we're thinking about the other motorists that are coming down the road. And then we know there's been some development recently. I don't know what stages this is in or if it's still happening, but, you know, a potential townhome is behind CVS or some additional entrance ways to the Mohawk Golf Club all right around that area that we believe will only increase traffic. And we want to make sure that where the fence does a butt and where our property butts Van Antwerp Road, we're just taking those safety concerns into consideration. In terms of alternative measures, we have met with a few landscapers to, if we had a four-foot fence, perhaps put up some taller trees, maybe some shrubs there. That would, you know, obviously, we didn't incur some, incur some additional costs. And with the rain garden being mandated, we would like to be able to have some fencing near that. Obviously, you saw that standing water is a concern to us. We have decided to, our initial thought was to have or request a six-foot fence going off the house where that more darker black mark is angled off towards Van Antwerp Road. We thought, you know, we could probably get by with just a four-foot fence there. So we're trying to compromise a bit and keep that just for four feet. And as I also mentioned, you know, we did think about, do we go straight off the back-left of our home? But we realized that we would be running right into that tree and would be forced to take that down, incurring, you know, potentially thousands of dollars in cost to take that down of a tree that Niskuna did want us to keep during construction. And that's, those are the measures that we've taken.
So we're in agreement that you could go straight back off the left-hand corner of the house, and that would not require any variance. You could use, you could have six foot the whole way back, correct?
Correct.
You could also go off the left-hand corner of the house, back to the tree, and then jut right to avoid having to take down the tree, correct?
So that those trees aren't in the exact location?
The survey company did concede that. We've actually talked. The trees are a bit of a concern on the back of our property because that back line of the property actually pretty much splits the trees back there. They're almost on the property line. It's the way the property was subdivided. And we're actually losing some of the back of our property with this fence because of where those trees are. So I wouldn't take those trees as gospel, but they're generally correct. I would say there's actually an additional tree that's a bit closer. The one I was referring to is actually a bit closer to the left-hand back corner.
So are you saying that it's not possible to go straight back without removing trees?
Correct.
All right. With respect to the need for privacy, how are you in a unique situation as opposed to everybody else that has cornered properties on Van Antwerp Road that needs the same considerations?
Yeah, I would say that privacy honestly isn't our main concern with a higher fence. It's more about the safety of, you know, like I said, with a couple of young children on a busy road, having things potentially go over, having children be able to, you know, there's no four-foot singular privacy fences that companies sell, at least that we've seen. It would be a picket fence with the ability for children to perhaps get through or get over more easily. And given that, we do have to come in a bit on the back of the property due to the way the property was subdivided. We would hate to, we want to try to maximize our property as well and have as big of a backyard as we can for our children to enjoy.
Does anybody else have any further questions for the applicant?
Chairman Hoak, yes. Good evening. So I just want to clarify a couple of things that are represented on this site plan. The, to the lower right-hand corner, if you were standing on the street looking at the front of your house, that kind of darker brown portion of the fence, that's going to be only four feet tall. Is that correct? And then once you hit that back corner, it turns into a six-foot fence, correct?
And I'm not sure of the exact distance, but I would assume somewhere around twenty to thirty feet is only, maybe less. I don't want to say anything wrong, but it's that section that abuts the darker part towards the back-left corner.
Okay, and, no, no, I think that's clear enough, I believe, for everyone here. And on the left side of the house, again, as you're facing your house from the street, the dark brown that you just said you considered having six feet, but then you lowered it to four feet to help mitigate what you were asking for. Can you describe how the land in that area falls? You know, is there a slope to it? Are there hills, berms, et cetera? You've talked a bit about the trees, but what's happening in terms of the terrain?
So on the left side of the house, there's a bulkhead on the back-left corner that you might be able to see, a small square there. After that, it pretty much just slopes down into that rain garden area where that water was.
So if I understand this correctly, the four-foot fence would be following the slope down kind of into the swale or lower area?
Stretch, as we go farther back away from the rain garden, the slope is not as drastic. It's flatter, but it would technically be sloped a bit.
Okay, so if a person were standing at the back of your house with their back to the wall, and they were looking out at the six-foot fence, it would probably be lower than their eye?
Yes, yeah. The house is the highest point on the property. I think the grade starts to fall off a couple of feet as we go out. I think, I believe there was a two-foot grade that, as you get towards the outer edge of the property. So it wouldn't be a full six feet as you're looking at it from the house, if that's what you're getting at.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against this application? Having heard none, is there anyone on the board who would like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve this variance. Feel like the benefit could not be achieved any other way. I do understand the need for security and having little kids around, and you've got this rain basin? Okay, right there. So I do understand not wanting to have your kids into that. I don't think it would be an undesirable change in the neighborhood at all. It is substantial, but I do think it was mitigated by having the four-foot to six-foot grades that you do have. I don't think it'll have any inverse physical, adverse physical or environmental effects. You've already got the rain basin there, so, and the water's not going to be prevented by the fence. And I do think it's self-created, but that is not determinative. So for that reason, I would like to make a motion to approve it.
A motion to approve has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Kenny, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, this is just, by the way, it's a very unique property, and it's a corner lot.
Mr. Dolman?
I'm going to vote no. I don't, I'm having a corner lot that's almost identical in shape to yours. I totally understand your concerns. However, I don't know that a six-foot fence provides any additional safety to a four-foot fence. And I have young kids myself in a corner lot. I find that it is an undesirable change in the neighborhood. It is a substantial request, but there's no adverse environmental impact. So on balance, I vote no.
Ms. Pacheco?
Going to vote yes. And while having a six-foot fence is not something that we often approve in a front yard, this is a unique property. You've already described the measures you've taken to mitigate what you're asking for. And there are trees there, and I think we do all recognize that Van Antwerp is similar to other collector roads in our neighborhoods that are seeing increased traffic. So for that reason, I would say it's not an undesirable change in the neighborhood character. It is still a substantial request. I don't think it will have adverse physical or environmental effects. And while it is self-created, it is not determinative. So I vote yes.
Mr. Daly?
I vote yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
I appreciate your application. However, I'm not convinced, from what I've heard and what's in the package, that the benefit you seek could be achieved by other means feasible, including, by way of example, a four-foot fence with arborvitae's or some other type of possible feasible means, at least in my mind. Also, again, you know, there are changes. Change is part of life, and there indeed may be changes, but I don't think that they're so severe. There's certainly no proof in front of this board that would tip the balance for me. I mean, I looked in the neighborhood and rode up and down Van Antwerp Road for the ten-thousandth time in my life. And you maybe even saw my car parked there, saying, why is this guy parking and looking? But I wasn't just looking at your place. I looked in the neighborhood. I went to the next intersection. I didn't see any six-foot fence there. So again, this was very difficult for me, but based upon what's before me, I am voting no.
Mr. Stein?
I say yes for the reasons stated. And also, one of the things I haven't noticed while sitting here is that there is that two-foot drop-off towards the back of the yard. That two-foot actually is about, where that two-foot drop-off hits is about where you go back up to six feet. So it kind of is almost evened out by just the grading of the land there. So again, yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hoak?
I would be a no this evening. I am a no this evening. And the reason that I would be voting against this application, I take the applicant at its word, at their word, that they couldn't find any other feasible means to achieve their goal of fencing in the yard. However, I do believe that this creates an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. It does have negative physical impact on the neighborhood, as well as being a substantial request. I am always very concerned about these applications in terms of picking winners and losers on nearly identical facts throughout the town. As the applicant, I'm sure, is aware, since they indicated they alluded to the fact that they listened to our minutes of our meetings and had come, came to this meeting prepared with their arguments, which I appreciate, but I don't find their application different than many of the other applications with nearly identical facts. I appreciate that every piece of property is unique. However, you know, they start to sound very familiar in terms of the application. So for those reasons, in a much closer one than the average application, I would be voting no. That being said, the vote was four to three in favor of the application, so your variance has been approved. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Kenny, we call the next matter, please.
The appeal by Veshma Sinakar for a variance from Section 220-18A3 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at seven twenty-two Pierce Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct a thirty-foot-by-forty-foot garage exceeding the height limit of accessory structures. Section 220-18A3 states, unless otherwise specified, accessory structure shall not exceed fifteen feet in height. As proposed, the garage would have a height of twenty-five feet. Therefore, a ten-foot building height variance is required. Seventeen notices were mailed, zero responses.
Will the applicant please come forward? Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Veshma Sanichar, fifty-six Tamarack Lane, Niskuna, New York, one-two-three-oh-nine.
Can you tell us a little bit about your application and the need for the variance?
Sure. So we purchased this property at seven twenty-two Pierce Road in Niskuna. It's got a little under four acres. And the property, so that's ultimately what we're looking to have the property look like. Currently, there's an older house on it. We already have a permit to tear down the garage and an attachment on the existing house, but we are looking to apply for a permit to tear down the entire property and just kind of start from scratch. So I applied, I put the application in for the permit for the garage first, but we're actually kind of going in the backwards order at this point, but since we're here, I'm here. The garage, so very large family, and we just have a lot of stuff. The garage is for storage, you know, the second floor of it is for storage. The household is currently seven, well, nine adults, two children, one on the way. My husband and I have seven children, got daughter-in-law, a son-in-law, two grandchildren, and one on the way. And we're just a combined household. And it's just for stuff. I'm tired of stuff being in the house, you know? My husband likes to pick up a lot of antique things, tools. He's buying stuff for the grandkids that they don't need yet. I just don't want it in the house. I want it in the separate garage that he's, the garage is intended for things like ATVs, dirt bikes. He has a lot of toys. And again, with the grandkids, he's accumulating more toys. I hadn't looked at any alternative, to be honest with you. We just kind of have all this property and thought, why not?
Well, okay, let me ask you some questions. Can you put the, yeah, the picture? So I understand you have a large parcel of property. This looks like, is the house going to sit back from the road?
Yes. So we're putting the new house behind the existing house, and the existing house is about one hundred and twenty-five feet back. So we're probably going to be about two hundred feet back.
Okay, so we're going to be able to see, though, the garage from the road, correct?
Yes, it will be visible, yes.
And the garage, the height of the garage is going to be lower than the height of the home, correct?
Correct.
And in terms of the storage, what kind of stuff do you need to store on the second floor? Because that's what you need the height variance for, correct?
Right. So a lot of it is going to be toys, things that I would anticipate my grandchildren are going to want access to. So initially, my husband's solution to not needing a variance was to build a fourteen-feet-high garage, which is regular trusses. And then he was going to have some sort of police system to kind of put the stuff on, pull it up higher. I see that as a safety issue for my grandchildren. So I suggested a second floor with stairs. They can climb up, go get their stuff, come back down. And that's how we arrived at this plan.
And the intention is not to have anything on the second floor of the garage other than for storage, correct?
Correct, correct. It's not going to be insulated. It's not going to be finished, just pretty much just the floor. I think, actually, I take that back. I think he's insulating it, but it won't be sheet-rocked or anything like that.
And in terms of, I know I asked you, what stuff do you need that, what stuff do you need to accommodate on the second floor of the garage? Did you answer this already?
Yeah, just the storage stuff. I mean, honestly, currently, he has things like kayaks, skis, snowboards, just all kinds of toys that are in my way.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the board who has questions for the applicant? Mr. Green?
Forgive me. Your introduction indicated to me that the house is not even up yet, right?
Correct.
And we're here this evening on an application about a garage that's not up yet.
Correct.
And then in my mind, it would seem that perhaps I'm wrong, but it seems maybe we're a bit early on this?
So to address that, yes. That's why I started to say I kind of moved backwards on the permit process. However, his final plan of the house is dependent on whether or not he's going to have the storage space. Because if he doesn't, then he might be extending on the house itself as far as storage attached to the house.
Yep.
Which I don't want the house to start becoming this monstrosity.
I hear you. I'm not directing my comments at this moment to you. I'm directing them perhaps to counsel.
Okay.
What happens if this board were to favor the applicant with this two-story garage? And then the house is built, but the house is then built different than what is depicted in the picture?
Actually, I have the plans, sir, if that helps.
Just if I may, I'm kind of directing my, looking for a bit of guidance from counsel here?
Well, what you're considering is not the house. You're considering the garage. So there's, the applicant can change the house. The variance is an area variance, so it would run with the land. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
No, it does. My concern, though, is that part of my consideration might be the way, the height of the house, the way it's being depicted, and the way that the garage may or may not fit in. And my concern is if somehow the two-story garage goes up and then the house is different. And then it doesn't look perhaps quite as appealing as it may to some of us in the photograph.
If I could suggest, I think maybe Mr. Green's question is, is there any way to condition any variance approval on the construction of the home?
Perhaps that might be a solution. In other words, I'm looking at something, a beautiful home that hasn't been built. And it looks like it's got one, two, three garages on the side.
Correct.
All right. And now we're here and say we grant you the request for an extra tall garage. And then all of a sudden, and I'm making this up, and I'm not suggesting that you or your husband would, you know, proceed in anything other than good faith, but all of a sudden, there's four garage doors on the side, or the house isn't as high as it looks. And then the garage, if we grant it and it's built, doesn't really match the house anymore.
I mean, any conditions on a variance has to be related to the variance itself. So you can't condition a variance on there being at least three garage doors on the side. You can condition it if it's relative to the height variance itself.
You could, you could make it relative to the height of the primary structure. You could condition it...
In theory, but if there's a house that's there currently and that doesn't match up with the house that's going in in the future, then are you creating an issue for the house that's currently there?
The house that's currently there, I understand, is demolished? And you have a permit?
No, not yet. Not yet.
It's going to be demolished, but you have a permit?
For a partial demolition?
Yeah. All right. Let me wrestle with that. It, what is the materials that you intend to use for the garage? And the materials you intend to use for the house?
It's going to be siding and some stone facade?
In the garage?
The garage is going to be all siding.
Is that, is the house and the garage going to match?
Yes.
All right.
So that's kind of what I'm after, to make sure that it matches, that the two structures will look good, will be cohesive and not be an eyesore to the neighborhood and myself.
Yep. Now, as you're standing on the roadway facing the front of the house, either the one that's there now or the one that you intend to build and facing the garage, what's behind the garage?
The existing garage or the one that's proposing?
Well, either the one that's ready, the one that we see in the picture, what's going to, what's behind the garage?
Oh, all trees. And that's one of the biggest things is I don't want, none of us, the entire family, do not want to take down any trees. We have a lot of deer and fox on the property, and we love that. So I want to keep it, that's why I'm requesting to go high rather than further into the property.
Yep. Is the proposed garage, what type of lighting are you contemplating?
Not sure. But it won't be lighting outside of the, off of the garage. It would be on the garage itself, you know, just maybe lamps on the sides of the doors as drawn in the plans. But nothing on the property itself outside of the garage to create a problem for the animals that are currently there.
Yep. Now, I see two windows on this proposed second floor of the proposed garage.
It was for aesthetics. We can take it off. It doesn't, it was just to kind of have it look good alongside the house. I didn't want it to look like a barn garage with a modern, new-looking house. And I did start, we did start the plans. They're just not stamped yet because I'm waiting to hear what happens tonight. But I do have copies of what Angelo Malo has started.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being so patient with me. I appreciate it.
Are there any other members of the board that have questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Sanichar?
Yes.
Based on the drawings that are included here, it appears that the first level of the garage is about 12 feet tall?
Correct.
And earlier, you were talking about having concern about pulleys and ropes and so forth to lift things off the floor. And 12 feet is quite large. It's something almost what we're seeing in this room.
Right.
So I'm curious about the door, the large vehicle door that's shown on the right elevation. Can you tell us what the size of the, well, either one of the doors, actually, both doors? What, what's the size of those doors?
I think, I think one was going to be the standard, the one on the side was going to be the standard height of eight feet. And the one in the front was going to be 10 feet because he's got a boat.
I'm sorry, he has what?
A boat.
A boat, okay. And I'm assuming at this point then that the boat is one of the tallest vehicles or structures that you would be putting, wheeling into the building. Okay. So that answers part of my question. What is the approximate height of the second floor in terms of floor to ceiling?
I think it was going to be eight feet. Let me just look really quick.
And while you're looking, I think you had said previously it was for the storage of toys, not just for the kids, but...
Not just for the kids, for my husband.
Adult toys?
Yes.
I didn't mean to make that sound in any other way, the tools and what people...
Definitely tools. It's got a lot of those.
Can you, after you look at that, can you talk a little bit about the...
I think it's eight feet.
The reason that it needs to be the 12 feet? Again, just so that we are clear on why the floor, the first floor height needs to be so tall. I'm trying to think about how...
Yeah.
It may be suggested, but I'm not telling you to do this, how it could possibly be brought lower or the slope of the roof could be a little bit less so that you're not going so far up.
Absolutely. So he just wants a space, claustrophobia. He has a lot of issues, just having things in his space. So that's why he wanted the height of it, 12 feet. And then he's also considering once the boat's in there, and if he's in the boat doing stuff, he doesn't want to be too far up on, on, you know, towards the ceiling. You know, I've thought about just making it 14 feet, the garage itself, and, you know, calling it a day, forget the second floor part of it. But why not try to see what we can get?
Okay. And then one more question, certainly with both the existing house, the new house, and this potential building. What are the drainage characteristics of the land?
It's actually flat. It's just flat land. There's no sitting water on any parts of it. It doesn't drain into any of the neighbors currently.
Okay. And do you have any idea how tall the existing house is currently?
Yeah, actually, I do. Actually, no, I'm sorry, I don't. The first floor, I know we were doing nine-feet ceilings on the first, eight on the second. No attic space.
It is a two-story structure?
It is a two-story structure.
Is it similar to maybe a Cape Cod style?
No, it'll be, it'll be like a colonial style with open living room space. So two-story living room, two-story foyer. Go big or go home?
Thank you.
Ms. Sanichar, so I guess one of the questions I have is in terms of the feasibility, you know, what you're trying to accomplish and whether it's feasible to have a lower structure. You're kind of indicating to me, at least from what I understand, that you believe that it's feasible to have a lower structure if we weren't to approve the variance application as you've requested it. Is that a fair assessment?
That is correct.
So I guess...
It's kind of like, I want this and he wants that. And, you know, I want the two stories for the safety of not having a pulley system. He's able to make it work, you know, by raising the, we'll still need a variance, actually, because if he wants 14 feet on the garage, that plus the trusses, we're still going to go over 15 feet.
Well, I guess the question is, you wouldn't need as great a variance?
I would not, no.
And so I guess part of the question is, is in terms of, and this gets back to what Mr. Green was saying, is it potentially premature for the variance application now until you know exactly what you need and can come before this board and specifically say, I know I need this? As opposed to, I'd like to get this, but we can make do with less if we need to. You know what I'm saying? Because kind of what the board is looking for is, what do you need?
I definitely understand that. It's just that I think I'm looking to find out what I can get as far as this detached structure so that my house doesn't go kind of overboard, if that makes sense.
I understand what you're asking for. This kind of goes back to a variance application that came in last meeting. And that was, do we offer advisory opinions as to what we, you know? It's not, it's not, you know, if we weren't going to grant 10 feet, would you grant nine feet? Would you grant eight feet? Typically, we're just going to look at the application that's before us tonight, which is a 10-foot variance application. If you were to come back in the future with an eight-foot variance application, then we would look at it at that time based upon that application. So I guess tonight, what I'm asking for you to tell me is, well, how, how big is the boat? How, how high is the boat? I assume the boat is on a trailer, correct?
It's on a trailer.
So how hot, what is the height of the boat on the trailer?
Oh, it's far enough to go together. I would say it's over 10 feet high.
What size is the boat?
I'm sorry?
How many feet is the boat?
22. 22 feet.
22?
Yes.
So I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate your candor tonight. Don't, don't get me wrong. I appreciate that you're being forthright with us. I just, I'm concerned about granting a variance more than what is actually needed, that the applicant yourself is indicating may be needed. You know, go big or go home. You want it as big as possible. I get that. But what we're looking for is, what is the maximum size you need?
Right.
So is there anyone else on the board that has any questions? Mr. Green?
I may have missed it. Where, where's the boat going to go? In door number one, two, or three, or?
It would be the front, the front, the front door.
Okay. So you, the boat, for just sake of argument, keep things simple. You got three doors on the right, and the boat's going to take up door space number one?
Um, no, it's not three doors. Let me, um, I thought the front, the front was going to be one, one door.
Ready, I, forgive me, ready? On the large residential house structure, on the left-hand side, there's, there are three, it looks to me like there were doors, are those garage doors?
On the house itself?
Yes.
Oh, no, those are for our cars. I don't, that's not, that's going to be more for the personal vehicles.
Got it.
Storage, yes. The detached garage is for the boat storage, the ATV.
Got it. Thank you. I just, thank you for clarifying that for me.
Are there any other questions?
The, I notice the nearby street, Charter Oak Drive. Do you own the land that goes all the way to that road?
So the, the land is actually a little, no, it doesn't go to Charter Oak. It's kind of on an angle. I do have a copy of the survey. I submitted a copy of the survey. Oh, that's a bad copy. No, our land doesn't, it goes at a diagonal, but it doesn't come out on any of the other roads. It, it's all backing up to other properties.
Okay. So there is some wooded land on Charter Oak that kind of is near your, your property, then? Is that correct?
Yes, that's a neighbor's property, yes. It is.
Okay. So their wooded area hides, that would hide it from view from Charter Oak as well?
You wouldn't see it from Charter Oak. You would, so when we did the new survey, the proposed garage and house, you would see about three-quarters of the front of it and a quarter of it about would be behind the existing, uh, behind the proposed new house.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you have any neighbors or friends who would like to speak for or against, who may be here?
No.
Okay.
Are there any members, I know where you were getting at.
Yes.
Is there any members in the community that wish to be heard for or against this application? Okay, Ms. Sanichar, will you take a seat?
Sure.
I believe there's some individuals who'd like to speak.
Absolutely.
Sir, could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Timothy Castle, 718 Pierce Road, Niskuna. Live right next door. First of all, welcome to the neighborhood. I guess when I, when I got a chance to look at the plans, I have a few concerns. I wouldn't say they're necessarily objections, but there's a lot of things kind of that seem up in the air.
Sorry, can I, can I just stop you for one second? We want to hear what you have to say.
Yeah.
What's before the board tonight is the variance request for the garage.
Understood.
So if you could just tailor your, your response concerns relative to that issue?
Correct.
Okay.
I will.
All right, sir.
The plans don't indicate what the access will be to the garage. So how, how do we, how do we get to the garage? Is this, this is not a plan. This is just, this is just a photograph of someone else's house, correct? Yeah. So, so this, this, nowhere on the plan did it show the access from the street to the garage. So I would be concerned where that's located in relation to our property. Especially a very long one with multiple, multiple large vehicles.
I believe, I believe the plans do reflect the door on the side of the garage.
I'm talking about the driveway to get to the garage. There is none on the, on the site plan.
Sir, just to clarify, you're talking about like the second door. There's a second door on the side, presumably, based on the plans, where that, where that, if it goes to...
If you look at the site plan, there, there's no, there's, here's the, at the bottom there, there's the garage. There's no driveway from, from Pierce Road to that garage. I don't know where it's coming. I don't know where it is.
And I, I'll let the, I'll let the applicant speak to that. Ms. Sanichar, why don't you just come up? Because I, if she could just answer that question, I, I believe I know the answer.
We're going to be using the same garage and just bringing it further back because the new house is going to be further back. It's actually going to be behind the existing house. So that existing garage is just what's going to come, driveway, excuse me, is what's going to come all the way back to the garage.
It's not going to change side.
Nope. No.
That's important.
Yeah.
Okay. As, as for visibility of, of the improvements to the rest of the neighborhood, they're, they're getting more and more visible because probably about a half acre of trees have already been removed. So... So it's, it's pretty sparse back there right now.
Yeah, his question, the woods.
You were asking about the woods?
Oh, yeah, you see everything now.
Ma'am, if you're going to speak, can you just state your name and address for the record as well?
I'm Heather Castle, I live at 718, I'm his wife, Pierce Road. So the view you were talking about from Charter Oak, we own that woods that you see, because we live in that first house. So the garage, you definitely will see it now, because the woods that were all there are just about...
Have been removed.
Removed, everything is gone. There's been so much removed so far since they moved in. And that's my biggest concern is, yes, this garage is coming in. Is it really going to just be a garage for storage? Or is this going to be a mechanic's garage? Are they going to be doing work in this garage? Is it going to be noisy? Because all I've seen is tractors and hauls of trees and everything being moved out since, since they've come in. I get there's a lot of property, and I love that for them. I love that you guys have it, the, I don't know.
We just want to make sure it's not getting out of hand.
Right, because we, we bought that land because we loved the serene environment. And now it's gone. The animals she's talking about, they're gone. There is no woods. My heart is broken over this.
I'm going to ask you a question, do you have any issues with the height of the garage? This is what's in front of us tonight.
I get that, but I'm going to see it.
So do you have a problem with the height?
Slightly, I mean...
We do, on a, on a positive note, I like the design.
I like the design, it looks like it's beautiful.
Well, here's, I mean, the issue that you have, we only have the height variance before us. Just understand that if the height variance is denied, it doesn't prevent the applicant from building a structure there. And that structure may be different than the design plans they put forward tonight. So it's kind of, so the only thing that's before us is that, you know, we can't put back trees here.
I get that.
Understood, but you do take into consideration, as I saw in the other applicants, you took into consideration drainage nearby, you took into consideration how far things were from neighbors, and that sort of thing, and you, you put that all into your decision-making process.
That's correct.
So I would expect the same, the same type of deliberation.
Well, so then the question to you becomes, from your house, how does the proposed height of the garage negatively impact you?
Well, there's no privacy.
So in other words, if the garage is 10 feet lower, is that going to make any difference to you one way or the other?
Well, we do have, part of, part of the fence, part of the fence between us also fell into, into our prop, part of their fence fell into our property, so I don't know if that's going to be replaced or not. But maybe if that was a little taller, that would help, I don't know.
But again, again, I'm just asking you specifically to the height of the garage. And let me be clear, I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize any of your concerns. I'm not trying to say that your concerns are not very legitimate. I'm just trying to grapple with what we have jurisdiction over here tonight as a board, and balance your, your legitimate concerns with respect to the height, which we do have something to say about, and we certainly can contemplate that, you know, with, with the applicant. So again, it seems to me, and maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying, that it's not so much the height of the building that you have concerns with, it's just the overall approach to the development of, or redevelopment of this lot, right? Isn't...
That's fair. That's fair. I do, I do still question, and I'm glad you clarified, the driveway, though. Because that would have been, that would have been a significant addition to what has already been, you know, troublesome.
Okay. Why don't, do you have anything further to say?
Nope.
Why don't I have Ms. Senator come back up and answer some of the issues that you've raised?
So, yes, there were trees taken down. They were taken down, there was a cluster of five, but they're very large trees, so I can see how the neighbors felt like, you know, it's now all sparse. They were taken down where the driveway would have to continue coming back into the property. And then there was a humongous tree that we did take down behind the existing house, which I can see how, you know, it affected them as they stated. But that's where the new house is kind of going to be, so those trees had to come down anyway.
Let me ask you this, are there any additional trees that you're planning on removing at this point?
There's one more tree that's directly behind the existing house that would need to come down for where we're going to put the new property and the driveway, yes.
And other than that tree?
Other than that, no. And also, we do plan on replanting trees along the border that we share with these neighbors. It's not going to remain empty like that. We are planning on, we like our privacy too. So the trees that are coming down are necessary for what we plan on putting up, but we are going to be replanting on both sides.
All right, did that, did that address some of your concerns?
Yes, definitely. So there was a very large tree that we took down from the property line that we share with these neighbors. It was rotted from the inside out, and my fear was it was going to fall after we started all this construction. The bigger tree that shared kind of our property line.
And I just think, Karen, it's not necessarily related, you just maintain an open dialogue with all your neighbors?
Oh, of course, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, is there anyone else on the board that has questions?
I have, I'm sorry, if, should we be asking the neighbor first?
If you have any questions, Ms. Senator.
I do. So subsequent to the descriptions of your neighbors?
Yes.
Uh, and seeing that the site plan that shows an approximate location of this structure, there are no dimensions there, so I would make the observation that a 25-foot building looks large when it's close to you, and it may look small when it's far from you. So that may make it hard for this board to consider the height of it, because we don't know where it is going to be placed on the lot. There are no dimensions showing that, so that's one concern. And then the other one, because this is a very general diagram, you may be able to answer the question of which way the second garage door is facing. So the first larger one is facing the driveway as it comes into the property.
Correct.
Uh, which way is the other one facing, because?
The other one is facing this neighbor's property, which would be Charter Oak.
Okay, so a vehicle that would be driven in and out of there, such as an ATV, maybe shining towards their property?
That garage door can be adjusted to like some sliders or French doors or something. It was more so to bring light into, because the garage is going to, the proposal is 30 by 40, so it's a big space for natural light to come into. That's why we did the garage door there, but we're willing to change it to sliders or French doors or something like that, just to allow for, opening it wide to allow natural light in.
Since you mentioned that natural light in there, what is the natural light good for?
Just when he's working in the garage, which he does a lot of, you know, cleaning cars. He's always working on something.
Okay, so there will be activity in the garage, not just storage? There will be working on tools?
There's 10 cars in the family, no, there's no mechanic work. I'm talking like cleaning it, always cleaning the boat. He's always cleaning our cars, you know, detailing them.
But noises associated with that?
A vacuum cleaner.
And so forth, that would be...
Just about a vacuum cleaner. You know, like a shop vac.
Uh, so you mentioned ATV, and I believe some, if not all ATVs have lights on them, like a car?
It, it's not used on the property. They go off, they go up to Vermont and Rochester and stuff like that. So it's more, it's being stored there, it's not going to be used on the property.
Okay, I guess my concern would be for the neighbors, because they have that garage door or sliding doors facing their property, that there would be light shining that way. Again, because we don't know where it is going to be placed on the property, I think that makes it difficult to understand the effect of the height of the building.
So the garage itself would be about 300 feet off of Pierce Road, and it would be approximately 200 feet from the neighbor's property on Charter Oak. So it would be from the right property line about 200 feet to the left, and from the left property line about 100 feet in. There's 439 feet from property line to property line in that vicinity, because the land kind of goes at an angle and wider as you go back. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone, thank you, Ms. Senator, I believe there's somebody else in the community that wants to be heard relative to this application. Sir, why don't you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, I am Corey Orlop of 736 Pierce Road, so, the other neighbor.
Talk into the mic, please.
Sorry, I'm a little better?
Better.
Okay, it sounds the same to me. Sticking just to height, I, I do have the same concerns with light coming in and things like that, but height's not going to change that. My concern is, it seems we're getting the cart before the horse, so to speak. I think Mr. Green was addressing a similar idea, and counsel regarded that the variance is granted toward the property. So looking at it as things stand now, this garage wouldn't match the character of the neighborhood in that there's no other garage that big, and it's not proportionate to the size of the house that currently stands there. Uh, right now, it's an unoccupied home, it's modest in size, and there's a tarp over the roof, and I have concerns for my property value if this were to be built alongside of what is currently there. I think that's it, that's just, those three things culminate to make me worry what the impact would be with a large garage as part of a modest, unoccupied home with a tarp over the roof, and what impact that, if I was to be looking to sell.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Senator, I just have one last, I'm sorry, that's fine. Ms. Senator, I have one last question for you. Where, you know, you're, what you've discussed this evening and the need for the garage, you've indicated that there's going to be ATVs, vehicles of boat, and that your husband likes to work on all these vehicles. Are all these vehicles going to be owned by occupants of the home?
Yes, they are.
Okay, they're not being...
They're basically owned by my husband, all of them.
Okay, they're all owned by your husband? Okay, he's not working on anybody else's vehicle?
No, absolutely not.
You're not storing anybody else's vehicles?
No.
Mr. Hope, I have a question for you. Just want to hear this one more time. I heard you say that, I heard you say that you will be okay with it if, if it's a 15 feet, is that correct?
Um, I would still need a variance, because we're okay with, if, you know, if it's not approved, we're okay with changing it to a 14-feet-high garage and just the peak, just the truss roof.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just one brief question. You said that if you didn't have the second floor of storage, that the proposed home would require additional storage space somewhere else. What would be, the reason I'm asking is I'm trying to assess the impact of what that alternative layout would be compared to a 15-foot fence. Or, I'm sorry, uh...
Yeah.
Sorry, it's late. As opposed to this height variance? So are you going to be pushing back into more woods?
No, it would be putting the storage above the three-car attached garage.
And the reason you want it outside of the house is?
I don't want, I don't want, I want to keep the square footage of the house to where it's manageable. But I guess whether it's above the detached garage or above the attached garage, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Senator, as I see it, you kind of have three options. The option, we have an application before the board for a 10-foot height variance. That's what we have to consider this evening. You could move forward with your application, which we're, we're going to, certainly is your right to have us take under consideration. The other option would be to withdraw your application until you knew exactly the, the exact specifications, answer all the questions as to where on the property the garage is going to be located, and then reapply for exactly what you need. I believe your applicant, I'm pretty sure your application would have to be different from the existing app, not if it's withdrawn, right? Not if it's withdrawn. So you, you could wait and see exactly what you need. Or you could request tonight to amend your application for something less than what you requested initially in the application, and see if the board would consider that. Those are your three options.
Option three.
Okay, so if you were going to amend it, what would you want to amend it to?
A 14-feet-high garage with just the attic truss, which I think Angelo, the architect, indicated would be about 3 to 4 feet for the appropriate pitch for snow and rain runoff.
Well, you, you would only need, you have 15 feet, right? It would be...
2 to 3 feet, 3 feet variance.
Well, I thought it should not exceed 15 feet, so...
I think she may be stating that the first part would be 14 feet, and then the trusses would take an additional 3 feet.
So it'd be 17 feet in total? Okay, so you would need a 2-foot variance?
2 feet, yeah.
Okay, so that is what you'd like to do this evening?
Correct.
Okay, so the applicant can make that motion to amend her...
Really, not really a motion, but she can...
Yeah, she can just amend it. Okay, so is that your intent to amend your application to just a 2-foot variance?
Yes.
Okay. As amended, is there any additional questions that anybody on the board has relative to the request for a 2-foot variance?
I would, I would just, uh, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, I would invite any comment to be made now that there is a different application? Should anyone here wish to speak? I don't know that they would or not.
Understood, Mr. Green. Is there anybody else on the board that has any questions relative to this application? Taking Mr. Green's invitation, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard for or against the application as it relates to the current request for a 2-foot variance? Height variance? Okay, Ms. Senator, have a seat.
Even with the modification to the variance, I still think we're putting the cart before the horse here. We don't have a house to compare this relative in size to. This garage is still out of proportion for the size of the house that's currently there. And until that's solid in stone for planning, or at least the current one is demolished, I, I think we're still, I'm still having the same issue of concern of impact on my property's value.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I have one further question for the applicant. The house that's currently existing on the property is vacated, correct? No one is living there?
That's correct.
Okay, I think that answers my question, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Senator. Nothing for, having heard no further questions, nothing further from the audience. Would the board like to make a, is there anyone on the board who would like to make a motion for or against the application as it relates to the current application for a 2-foot, 2-foot height variance?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dolman.
I would move to approve the application. I don't find that the benefit can be achieved by other means. There needs to be enough room for the boat and for proper pitch for the snow. I don't see that this 2-foot height variance offers any undesirable change to the neighborhood. 2 feet is a substantial request. However, I don't, I also don't see any adverse environmental impact, and while this is self-created, that is not necessarily determinative. I'd also like to point out that a lot of the discussion today centered around the existence of a garage period. And the applicant absolutely can build a garage. The question is whether or not we're going to grant the variance per height. And on the balance, I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dolman, a motion has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
A motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard no discussion, Ms. Chikene, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes, and I did hear the neighbors, but I'm happy to see the applicant change the request and reduce it 8 feet.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
I'm going to vote no for several reasons. As discussed, there are some unanswered questions about location on the property, and I believe with perspective, whether it's close to one neighbor or farther from that neighbor, the height of it will may have an impact on them. And with the description of having a 14-foot kind of base and then a three-foot truss, I think that would create an undesirable change in the nature of the, the neighborhood and a detriment to the nearby properties. It's still a substantial request. I don't think it will have adverse physical or environmental effects. And the difficulty is self-created, but not determinative. But it's still, there are too many unanswered questions here and with the nature of the form of that garage and the height of it related to what you proposed for the main building, it's just too questionable, so I vote no.
Mr. Daley?
I'm going to vote for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
One of the things that's important here to me in my vote is your representation to this board and to your neighbors that the primary residence is as represented to all of us. Vis a vis the representation you're making with regard to the new garage. In other words, in the end, should your application this evening be, amended application be granted? In the end, when we sometime shortly down the road look at this, we see what you have, as I understand it, and as in the record, have represented to us. In other words, it's going to be in relative proportion as described. It will match. The driveway will be, as you have indicated. There will not be other significant changes. And thing that, in addition to, one of the other things that is important to me is the fact that based upon the discussion here, not only with the board but also with your, your neighbors, you have shown a willingness to work to minimize the extent of the variance by amending the application and reducing the request of the amount of height variance needed. Still substantial in my mind, still pretty close in my mind. But given all the considerations here, I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Stein?
I'm going to vote yes, both because I do believe that you represented yourself truthfully today. I do appreciate that you lowered what you were asking for down to the two-foot variance. And I do believe that ultimately, while there will be some, you know, construction pains for the neighbors, but ultimately you're adding to property value here. That dilapidated home that's covered by a tarp is not going to help to anyone. So for all of those reasons, I'm voting yes.
Chairperson Hope?
I'm really torn on this application. I fall somewheres between Ms. Pacheco and Mr. Green with respect to their logic. On one hand, I applaud the applicant for reducing the need for the variance. I believe that she has put forth some beautiful plans for the property in terms of the construction of the home and the garage was originally contemplated. I am concerned that the reduction of the height of the garage now will potentially create a greater undesirable change in the neighborhood because now we have a large base without the height that was originally contemplated in the drawings. That being said, I am, but what is before the board is the two-foot height variance. And I don't believe that the two feet in and of itself will create an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Although in the context of this application, it's still substantial. And I do believe that the applicant has articulated that the project can't be accomplished without the need for some sort of height variance. So for those reasons, I am on a very close yes and the variance is granted five to two. So congratulations, your variance is approved. I hope, I hope everything works out with the construction.
Thank you.
Okay, take care. Ms. Chiketti, will you call the next matter, please?
Appeal by Brian Reichenbach of Miller Manix Schachner Hafner LLC agent to challenge the interpretation from the Planning Department of Section 220-41A6 of the zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskuna as it applies to the property of 2754 Aqueduct Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the OTLI Office Technology Light Industrial Zoning District. In December 2023, the Planning Department determined that the addition of Warren Tire's operations to the existing garage at 2754 Aqueduct Road required a site plan review from the Planning Board. Section 220-41A6 states that site plan approval requires requirements applied to all additions, deletions, and site changes, including changes of tenancy or ownership and changes in the use of an existing building site or portion thereof. Nine notices were mailed out, one response. To Town of Niskuna Zoning Board of Appeals, to those concerned, pertaining to the proposed change in zoning of the property at 2754 Aqueduct Road belonging to Sandy Jackson, the Jacksons have lived and operated at that location for the past 50 years and we have lived next door. We could not ask for better neighbors and we would support them in their request in the change of zoning. Larry and Susan Felpell, 2774 Aqueduct Road, Niskuna, New York, 12309.
Mr. Reichenbach?
Evening, Mr. Chairman. How are the board?
How are you, sir?
I'm doing well, thanks. How about you?
Good. If you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Brian Reichenbach with Miller Manix Schachner and Hafner, Glens Falls.
Before you start your presentation, I'd just like to point out to the board this is a different type of application than we normally have. This application is seeking to challenge the interpretation of the Planning Department relative to Section 220-41, specifically A6. Everybody should have a copy of that provision of the code in front of them. And the appellant, the applicant, is taking the position that it has not been, that stat, that provision of the code hasn't been accurately interpreted by the Planning Board. So before Mr. Reichenbach says anything, I would like to give Laura an opportunity to just explain how the Planning Department has interpreted this section relative to this property.
Sure, so I attached a memo from the Planning Board just to give you some background information. But essentially, the Planning Board, Planning Department, has consistently interpreted, interpreted that code to mean that change of tenancy requires site plan review at the Planning Board. We just recently had a portion of a site at the Knott Street Co-op turn to be inspired. So retail to retail is still a change in tenancy and we have always reviewed those at the Planning Board level. I mean, in the memo I sent to you, I think I put five examples of, of when the Planning Board reviews tenant changes. It's a very normal, regular occurrence for us. And we just have always interpreted that code that any change in tenancy requires a site plan review.
Ms. Robertson, specifically, you say we've always done it that way. Why specifically have we done it that way? What provision of the code requires that interpretation from your perspective?
Yeah, so that is the section of code that we printed out that's cited in the denial, that's Section 220-41A6. And just reading directly from the code, "All additions, deletions, and site changes, including changes of tenancy or ownership and changes, and changes in the use of, of any existing building site or portion thereof."
And specifically as applied to this property, what led you to apply that provision?
So, the building inspector noticed a sign on the end of the driveway as he was driving down Aqueduct Road that stated that Warren Tire was somehow involved in the site. Drove up and noticed that there was, Warren Tire was part of the site. Checked with Planning Department to see if it had Planning Board approval, which it did not. Reached out to the applicant and noted that they had subleased the building, a portion of the building, to the Warren Tire and let them know that that would be a tenant change that would have to go before the Planning Board. Additionally, which I think maybe goes beyond the scope of the zoning board, there are some questions of whether or not the use has changed, but I feel like that would normally go to the Planning Board, just to make, they could review that. But generally speaking, once we realize that there was a subtenant in the building, that's when we would trigger the review for the.
And just one last question. As of today, nobody has stopped any uses at the property, correct?
They, it's kind of, we interpret it as like if we see somebody have a six-foot fence and they're appealing, they're allowed to hold the six-foot fence up until you guys make your determination. So, yeah, we haven't made them change what's happening there until they had the right to come to their appeal.
Thank you. Mr. Reichenbach, I just wanted to lay the foundation for why, why we are where we are tonight and certainly want to give you the same opportunity to state your position with respect to the, the appeal.
Thank you. Brian Reichenbach, Miller Manix, Schachner and Hafner, Glens Falls. And we represent Sandy Jackson, Alexander Jackson, who owns 2754 Aqueduct Road. I want to make clear why I'm not here. I am not here to try to invalidate or close off any portion of the town code. That's not what we're doing here, that's not what this board does. What I am here to do is to ask you to reverse the determination that site plan review is required for this use. That's important here because land use law is about the use, not the person. And to the extent this lawful, prior, non-conforming use hasn't changed, it has not. We believe that the owners and his tenants, to the extent he has any, are entitled to continue this same use. The use hasn't changed. Sandy Jackson, before him, Jackson Tree Service, then Jackson Demolition Service, and now Jackson Demolition Service and Warren Tire are using the property exactly the same as it's always been used. There's a memo in the file, I believe you all have it, from 1984 to the Planning Board about this being a prior lawful, non-conforming use. It still is. That has not changed at all. And I draw your attention, folks, I'm sorry about the glasses, but I'm, I can't see people with them on and I can't read with them off, so.
No apology is necessary.
Thank you. This, this use has not changed. There's been no termination of it. It's continued uninterrupted since, I think, the middle of the last century. I'd also like to say that my first letter on this appeal, I believe that's all good law and good argument, but I think after having some initial, additional discussions with my colleagues at the firm, I think this board doesn't need to get to that to, to grant us the relief we're asking. And what we're basing this on tonight is a couple of things. If you look at 220-32.6J, and I don't know that you have that before you, but I can quote from the code. That section says that, "Planning Board consideration, each change of use in any existing facility in the OTLI zone shall require site plan approval by the Planning Board to ensure that future uses are in keeping with the purpose of the article." Then it says, "If the use is within the same category of uses, for example, storage from furniture to tools, no new site plan is required." Later in that subsection, it says that "Any other requirements of the town code or state law may require site plan review if it's necessitated by the change in use." Something that's not present here. Simple change of identity or in addition to the identity of the user is not a change in use. Every time a massive restaurant corporation, like a McDonald's or a Burger King or a Wendy's, if some corporate change happens to the ownership of that, do they then have to come for site plan review for every restaurant they have in the town? That may be the case, but I don't think it's appropriate for a prior non-conforming use if that is the case. Additionally.
Mr. Reichenbach, why would it be different for a prior non-conforming use as opposed to?
Because.
The prior conforming use?
The prior non-conforming use then becomes a statutorily guaranteed and a constitutionally guaranteed right. If you have a, a use that you were, that was lawful prior to the enactment of the zoning code and you continue it, it's then a constitutionally protected property right. So the town can't, can't regulate that right to engage in that use away except in very limited circumstances.
Well, Mr. Reichenbach, just from my understanding here, nobody has stopped any uses or argued the town board, the town planner hasn't taken the position that any uses are not, that are the uses that are engaged at the site currently aren't permitted. That hasn't, there's been no determination of that, correct?
Agreed.
And wouldn't it be the case that a part of requiring the site plan approval would in part ascertain the existence of the uses at the, currently at the site?
Well.
Like, in other words, how would the town know what uses are being, taking place at this site? I, I understand that a prior non-conforming use has a right to continue as that, that same use gets to continue at the site irrespective of who the owner of that property is, you know, like a variance runs with the land kind of thought process. And who owns the, the, the property is irrelevant to that. But if there are changes in use, that could impact whether it is a prior lawful, prior non-conforming use, correct?
It could.
And, and then how would the town know what the uses are at the property when you have a change in tenant without some kind of deliberative process?
Well, it's not necessarily a change in tenant because Jackson demolition is still there. There's been an addition of, of another, of a tenant. So it's not a complete change. But more to your point, they could have asked. My understanding of the genesis of this entire matter was when I got a call and an email, frantic call and email on December 23rd of last year at about 3:45 in the afternoon. And I was told that there was a stop work order affixed to the door of the premises at 2754. I was given a copy, I believe, of the stop work order, it was a sticker, I think. I was given a copy of that that had a phone number on it. I spent a good part of the next week when I was out of town observing the holidays with my family, trying to reach the gentleman whose name was on there. I couldn't get a call back. As I understand it, one of the individuals from Warren Tire went to the town offices either that week or the next and spoke with Mr. Henry. And he was told, as long as you submit a site plan review, we're not going to keep, make you stop working. But I think, Mr. Chairman, that, that raises an additional point with regard to site plan review. There are no standards. I've looked through the town code and I read this particular section about five times. 220-32.6, uses in the OTLI zoning districts. And it gives a pretty exhaustive list of the standards that the Planning Board is to consider when granting or denying site plan approval. There's not one in there that's not related to health, safety, welfare, or the site plan. The, the, the uses of the property. There's nothing in there about the identity of the user. So my argument on that point is that there are no standards based on the identity of the user. How could the Planning Board possibly deny that without being arbitrary and capricious? And if they can't deny it, why does my client have to spend the money and the time seeking an approval that can properly not, not be granted?
Can I answer that?
Ms. Van Nee.
So the purpose really of the site plan review, especially with an addition of a tenant, is to look at things such as parking, safety, anything additional, especially with tires, there's fire safety concerns with that. So it's not, I mean, I think you're, I don't want to say you're making the assumption that it's going to be denied. I don't know that I've ever seen a site plan application denied with our Planning Board, but it's really for the town to cross our Ts and dot our Is and make sure that when a new tenant comes in, that. a new tenant comes in, that the code is otherwise followed and that there are not going to be any changes. So it's more or less just, you know, kind of like a checklist type thing and not so much, we're not looking, it doesn't matter who the tenant is, as long as the use, as you said, is in line with what's been approved or as prior non-conforming. But when there is an addition of tenants, there may be more vehicles coming and going, there may be deliveries that they have to look into that weren't there before. So, I mean, just kind of in sum and substance, that's the purpose of it. It's not necessarily for it to be denied, it's just to check to make sure if there are any changes that need to be made when there is an addition of tenant, that those changes are being made.
Understood. I, I, I believe that still leaves open the question of requiring site plan review when there's been no allegation that the use has changed, and it hasn't. There are fewer vehicles coming in and out now than when Jackson demolition was the only occupant.
Well, Mr. Reichenbach, I'm sorry, just one last question. Isn't your, the, the crux of your argument, though, that the language of the code doesn't require it? I mean, if, if the, if the language of the code requires it, whether we think it's a good idea or a bad idea, right?
Right.
Whether you think that, hey, you could have just asked us, you didn't have to go through this full site plan approval process, we could have just gone, you know, we could all had a coffee and figured things out. That's kind of secondary and that's outside the scope of this board's jurisdiction to determine. Really, we're faced with whether the code says it or it doesn't say it, right?
Yeah. I think that's arguable, arguable, Mr. Chairman. If you look at 220.41, which is the, the subsection that the Planning Department is relying on, it's Sub A6. I believe you have that language in front of you. That says that all additions, deletions and deletions and site changes, including changes of tenancy or ownership and changes in the use of any existing building, site or portion thereof. That's conjunctive. That requires a change in tenancy and ownership and a change in the use, which is backed up by the plain language of 220-32.6-J, which says if the use is within the same category of uses, no new site plan approval is required.
And, and Laura, with respect to that statute, which I do not have in front of me, can you bring that up?
Oh yeah, I had that. I can bring it back up again. I mean, he read it, he read it word for word, but I can't.
It's in the back? You have it in our packet, I'm being told?
No, I'm just bringing it up from the website and I was trying to zoom in on it so you could read it, but it's pretty hard to see. I can't get the, I can't get the text on the website to zoom in. So there's a specific section in our code, 22 dash, well, it's actually the article, Article 6 supplementary regulations relative to specific uses. This was a little bit in my memo. The OTLI zoning district was adopted, I believe, in 2005, and this is supplementary guidelines for the, for the OTLI zoning district. And the code that he was speaking to is J. Planning Board considerations, each change of use in any existing facility in the OTLI zone shall require site plan approval by the Planning Board in order to ensure the future uses are in keeping with the purpose of this article.
So that particular section is talking about a change in use in which we, your position is there is no change in use.
Correct.
However, there is a change in tenancy, which then gets to your secondary, you know, your argument that 220-41A6 requires both the change in tenancy and the change in use to require the site plan approval, right?
That's correct.
And Ms. Finnian, what's your position with respect to that? Do you have any?
Well, the interpretation that was made was that that's intended to be a list and not conjunctive.
Yeah, respectively, Chairman, we didn't deny them on the OTLI zoning district code. We just denied them on the face of the tenant change code that we've been enforcing in all the time that I've been here. Just as another example, ShopRite just changed the price shopper, right? So a supermarket went to a supermarket. That still comes to Planning Board for us to review and we look at whether or not they're changing, you know, how they're doing deliveries, whether or not they're changing the lighting, how they're going to do their signage. Every property has permitted uses. They can be non-conforming and they can be allowable. A supermarket is an allowable use, but they still go to tenant change so that we check and make sure that we are, you know, handling all of the, the details that come with changes in tenancy on site plan.
Yeah, once again, I appreciate that that's how it's done and I appreciate the understanding as to why it's done that way. I guess I'm just looking from, from an, interpreting this specific provision of the code. And when I first read this provision, I said, clearly there's a change in tenancy, clearly there's site plan approval, it's required. But now when it's being pointed out that it says changes in tenancy or ownership and changes in the use of any existing building site, I see the argument that's being made that it's somewhat unclear.
Mr., I'll open it up for other questions.
Thank you. So if, if that is in fact the case, if that argument holds that, that is a conjunctive right there, that does not necessarily preclude us understanding what the use is of that tenancy. So for example, we did do a site survey from Price Chopper or from Price Chopper to, I'm sorry, from ShopRite to Price Chopper or Market 32. If they had decided that they were going to build a warehouse there instead of a retail, how would, and we had already foregone, foregone a site plan review because it, the site plan review is in fact our way of determining what that use is. How, how do we know that Warren Tire, which is an auto mechanic business, is not changing the use compared to storage of vehicles? Those are, those are different businesses. Those are different uses as defined by the code, just like the difference, it would be different to change from ShopRite, the grocery store, to Market 32's warehouse. How would you address how you believe the town should understand what the use is?
Yeah. I think there are a couple of points there. First, I think this is not a change of a retail grocery store to a warehouse. This is a change of, this is an addition of a tenant, really using this building for the same thing the building's ever been used for. I looked pretty exhaustively at those standards for the OTLI district. They're not doing anything under those standards that's different from what Jackson Tree Service and then Jackson Demolition ever did. They store vehicles in the, in the building. They have a minimal stock of tires because they dispatch the vehicles for off-site work. They don't, in rare exceptions, there are, I'm not going to say there haven't been rare exceptions, but there are rare exceptions where they'll do some installation at the, at the facility, but it's not a retail location by any stretch of the imagination. Secondly, I don't believe that site plan review under your code is the proper way to determine what the use is. I think it's to determine whether the site plan meets the Planning Board's standards. And there are no Planning Board standards for who is the tenant, the identity of the user. I think that's a function of the Planning Department and the Code Enforcement Department. Did I answer your question?
Well, Mr. Reichenbach, isn't that kind of a red herring because the purpose of the site plan, and the only reason you're here before here, that the, the Planning Board may have its own purposes, as Ms. Finnian laid out for the site plan approval process irrespective, in addition to determining what the use of the property is in terms of the intensity of the use, whether there's going to be a necessity for additional parking spaces and so forth as was previously laid out. And what is before the board tonight is really just to determine whether or not the provision of the code was correctly or incorrectly interpreted by the town planner, not necessarily whether, it, it doesn't really have anything to do with the use of the property, what is being used or not used at the property. That's kind of secondary. It's kind of, you know, a non-issue for tonight's purposes, correct? We don't have to make that determination whether there's a use. That, that all requires factual determinations that aren't before the board this evening.
I, I agree with that. I agree with that. I would provide the caveat that our argument tonight is that requiring site plan approval where there's no allegations of a change in use is not the proper vehicle to determine that, especially where there's a prior non-conforming use that.
Whether it's proper or not, if the code says that it's the method that the code requires, that's what this board has to determine, correct?
And I guess I will, yeah, I will concede that the propriety, the ultimate propriety, I guess, is for the town board to determine.
Correct.
But I'm saying that, I'm arguing tonight that the code, when taken as a whole, does not require site plan review in this instance.
Under, I understand your argument. Are there other people that have questions?
I have. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Laura, this question for you. I heard that there was two other businesses were using that site before and it seems like we did not request a site plan review for the previous tenant. And I know you mentioned that they had a sign for, and this is how it came to our attention, for the inspector.
Yeah, the building inspector noticed the sign. Yeah.
In the case of the two other tenants, that they were using that site and it seems like there's no changes in using that site besides getting caught because somebody put a sign. I'm not clear on this.
Right. So the site is really interesting. It, it has a single family home, Jackson demolition. I mean, I think, I, I think possibly outlined this in his memo to you guys, but I mean, it's a pretty substantial demolition country that works across the Northeast, but his home is on this parcel. It's been the Jackson home for a very long time. And then in the eighties, actually, I think even in the sixties, there was a large garage that was attached, well, it's not attached, but associated with the single family home, burned down. And at the time, the owner was concerned that he wouldn't be able to rebuild it, so he came back to the Planning Board and at the time, it was owned IG, which is a different zoning that is now then zone. And he received a special use permit to use the garage for the storage of materials related to Jackson demolition's company.
Okay.
Then the town rezoned the parcel in 2005, and so I think that special use, use permit then converts into a pre-existing non-conforming legally allowable use, completely fine for that use to continue in all ways, shapes and forms. Use is fine. But, but our interpretation is that we're applying the same interpretation to a non-conforming use that we apply to all commercial businesses, pre-existing non-conforming, special use permits, you know, just regular old price shoppers to Market 32s.
Okay. Same standard. And I understand, this is not the same as ShopRite, but for the code, it's similar. So in this situation where, what is involved for them to get a site plan review? What is involvement? What is the cost? Why is it they finding it, trying to get around the site plan review and bypass the planning requesting that? Why is it in front of the zoning board? And I, I understand that the zoning board can make the decision tonight. Each one of us have to vote on it. I understand that. But again, why is it now because of that Warren tires that it's all of a sudden, it's becoming a, as thing for us to look at as a zoning board when it wasn't before us before and the two other tenants?
Yeah, I mean, so the other two tenants really are, when you say other two tenants, I mean, Jackson demolition, Sandy own those two companies. I mean, that, I mean, and you're talking like 30 or 40 years ago. So I mean, I can't say why those ones didn't go through tenant review. It's so long ago that it changed from a forest removal company to a demolition company. I absolutely do not know why that didn't have a tenant change.
So you're saying those tenants, they were the same owners?
Same, well, same owner, but I mean, even theoretically, if we were to look at that now and, you know, Jackson demolition said, hey, I'm going from Jackson demolition and I'm going to be this new business and we're going, instead of doing tree removal, we're going to do demolition. I mean, we would definitely say, okay, well, let's just make sure that whether or not that needs site plan review. In particular, though, this is a totally, I mean, this is new, like it's something new. And I, you know, I, I want to be respectful to a non-conforming use. I am very respectful to them, but even when he says rarely do we do work on a vehicle, even rarely, I, you know, like when I interpret a non-conforming use, you can't change it to anything but a conforming use. So to me, I'm really respectful that they're sharing that, you know, we got the email from the fire department that they had business done there. I think another thing that the Planning Board has to make sure of in site plan review is that the use is remaining the same and that they have that conversation with the owner that says, you know, we're looking at you as a tenant change, you're allowed to continue the use, we need to understand what your spaces are, like where's Warren Tire going to be, where's Jackson, where's the storage going to be, and set those boundaries that it can't be rarely, you actually honestly cannot do work on retail vehicles in that, you know, without getting a use variance. I understand the word rarely, but it, it really, generally, I'm sorry for those businesses, but they are going to have to stick to storage. So like, that's another thing that we would normally look at with site plan review. We're just going to iron out those details with them to make sure that all is well, the code is complied with, and that we figure out how they're doing those things up and down that driveway.
Thank you, thank you. This is a good, good stuff. Just to add to my question, now, why are you arguing that trying not to have a site plan? All it is, is a checklist.
The, the minimal burden of. Burden. When Mr. Jackson, Sandy, year and a half ago or two years ago, asked me whether he could let out some of the space, he still occupies some of the space there. He's still, he let out some of the space because he moved the, the bulk of his operations to Anthony Street. When he asked me if he could do that, I looked at the code, I looked at the fact that they had a prior non-conforming use, and I said, if they do the same things, if it's the same use under the code, absolutely. And I'm not talking about minor differences. I'm not talking about the trucks being road service tire trucks as opposed to road service demolition trucks. I'm not talking about those kinds of differences. They're doing the same kind of thing. There are vehicles stored there. If a vehicle breaks down, they work on their own vehicle in the garage. They've always done that. When the fire district called them to ask, say that they were in a bind, could they put the tires on there? They agreed. It's not a retail location, okay? They can, I've told Warren Tire I wouldn't do that. It's a loss for the fire district, unfortunately.
But, but just to get back to the question.
Okay, I'm sorry. I digressed.
That's okay.
And I gave him that advice that if the use was the same, they could continue to do it. Then when this came up at the end of last year, I was having a conversation with Sandy and I said, just do the site plan review. I said, the tenant's agreeable to doing it, just do the site plan review. Well, if I do the site plan review, are they going to deny it so I can't have a tenant and I can't do what I've always done there? I said, no, they can't, under the code. He said, then why do I have to do it? Why do I have to pay you? Why do I have to pay a surveyor or an engineer to prepare the document? Why do I have to do it if I'm doing the same thing I've always done? I didn't have a good answer for that.
Well, I'm sorry, you have another question?
Yeah, no, just to add to it. Since it is in front of us late now, and it sounds to me as only one vote on the zoning board, you know, that a site review will help the owner to decide what he can do with that property. That's just an opinion. And I don't think the town, what I've heard, that they ever deny a site plan as law and people follow how many cars in a parking lot, what, what it's going to be used for and so on. So I still think, you know. So I still think, you know, your client could be gaining out of having a site plan, just, just an opinion. Thank you, Mr. O. I mean, I have more question, but.
Well, yeah, you can respond to it a second. I just want to get, circle back and get us back on track in terms of what is currently the use of the property, the factual determinations that the plan is asserting is happening there, whether it's happening or not happening, whether it's the identical existing use and the intensity of that use is the same, isn't before the board tonight. None of that is before the board tonight. And really, we're just, and, and to Mr. La Type's point, I believe originally is, why are we here? Why, why is this, this what is typically a planning board matter in front of the zoning board tonight? That was one of your questions, right, Mr. La Type? Ms. Finney, could you, could you answer that question, why it's here tonight, just for the, for the, for our edification?
Well, it's here for tonight because the zoning board, I mean, typically you see requests for use variance or area variances, and those are the cases that you're considering. But the other type of appeal that can be taken is an interpretation of the code. So that's what this case is about is the planning department made an interpretation under Article 220, Section 220 dash 41, as you have before you, that this particular property owner had to go to the planning board for site plan approval. The applicant then challenged that interpretation of the code, requesting that this board review that interpretation and review that portion of code. And it's, they're seeking for this board to essentially overturn the planning board's interpretation.
And, and from my understanding, my simple mind in reading the statute, it seems that the section that's most applicable is, well, it's not most applicable. The issue that we're deciding tonight is whether the 220 dash 41 A6, which reads all additions, deletions and site changes, including changes of tenancy or ownership and changes in the use of any existing building site or portion thereof, we all agree, including Mr. Reigenbach, that we agree that there has been a change in tenancy at the, a portion of the property.
Correct.
So we're all in agreement there. And Mr. Reigenbach's position, correct me if I'm wrong, is that in order for this section to be applicable, you not only have to have a change of tenancy, you also have to establish, or there has to be established, a change in the use, which Mr. Reigenbach will not concede there has been any change in use of the property. Is that a succinct recitation of where we're at tonight?
It is.
And that is the sole issue before the board this evening.
So, Mr. Chairman, based on that, can I ask a textual question?
I'm not a textualist, but you can ask that question. Maybe Ms. Finney can answer.
So I understand your argument as to 22041 A6. So my question is, isn't that informed by 22040 outlining the purpose of the entire, the entire section where 22040B states that the purpose of the, of the site plan review process is to understand the health, safety, general welfare, intent of the comprehensive plan, et cetera. Does, how do you see 22040B informing how we would interpret 22041A6?
I'll let Mr. Reigenbach answer that question.
I feel like that's pretty, it frames, I, I feel like that frames the town's intent pretty well.
I, I agree. And I think the, the meaning of that subsection is that you take the entire code into account. You can't read one provision in isolation. You can't say that 22041A, I'm sorry. Yeah, 41A, the, the one we're talking about with the conjunctive.
22041A6.
Yeah, A6. I don't believe you can read that in isolation and interpret it contrarily to the rest of the code that provides everywhere that you need a change in use or that the code addresses the use, not the identity of the user.
Okay.
But those other provisions of the code don't fall under Article 8, do they?
The ones I was looking at were 220 point, I'm sorry, 220 dash 32.6, which is what I read from saying that no site plan review is, is necessary where there's no change in use.
The question though is, it, does it fall within, does that section of the code fall under Article 8?
Which section?
The one, the 220 dash 32 or whatever you decided to.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's in conflict with our interpretation of the code. The purpose is that we're providing that the, that the land meet the provisions of design, function and layout criteria, which the planning board regularly reviews. And like, if you look at, I just completely lost my. Just give me one second. Too late for me. Past my bedtime. So if you look at a subtenant, they, like, when we generally interpret this code, and we interpret this code the same way all the time. Like to us, it's just a list, all additions, deletions and site changes, change in tenancy or owner, ownership and changes in use. And we don't review that based on owner. I don't know if you guys remembered when we had a tilted kilt come in. Everyone was like, how dare you let a restaurant like that come in? We do not focus on ownership in any way, shape or form. The tilted kilt was allowed to come in because it was a restaurant. It's a permitted principal use and we just review it in the, in the, in the way that we review site plans. You know, where the exit's going to be, how are you gonna, what are your hours of operation? How does that restaurant fit in with the rest of the plaza? So when we look at a tenant moving in, we're looking at how does that tenant work with your site? How, how are those, you know, how many more trucks are you going to have? Are you going to limit your, your time that those trucks come up and down the driveway? All of that stuff is very normal for us to review for tenant, for a tenant change.
No, I appreciate that, but I guess the question was, and you said originally, you don't believe it's in conflict. Textually, it's not in conflict. What section does 220 dash 32.6 fall under? What's?
No, sorry. So Eric was actually just, it's 220 dash 40, the purpose. So the purposes of site plan review, what guides the planning boards?
No, but Mr. Reigenbach was saying 220 dash 32.6 is what he was drawing on for support.
Oh, that, okay, yeah. So that's additional requirements for the OTLI zone. Those would be additional requirements. So like in the CN zone, we have additional requirements that any, any sign in the CN zone has to have planning board review. Where under the normal sign code, just 220 dash 12 or whatever the sign code is, not all signs have to be reviewed by the planning board. But in specific zones, they sometimes have like higher levels of review. So in the OTLI, there's a code that adds additional requirements to an OTLI zone. He is citing a portion of that code that states that any change in use in the OTLI zone needs planning board approval. But to me, that section of the code would be almost an additional requirement, but probably shouldn't have been written. It's irrelevant essentially because, because any change in tenancy in our, in our site plan review would automatically trigger a site plan review by the planning board. So.
So, Mr. Reigenbach, as I understand, the town's position is that the general applicability of Article 8 trumps the specific applicability of the section that you are citing to.
And I, I disagree with that because I think it's in the OTLI district. So those requirements.
Supersede the general requirements.
I think they have to be read at least in concert. And I think that as a land use law, I think it has, any ambiguity has to be construed strictly against the town in favor of the applicant. And I also have been, for five years now, I've been with Miller Manix and we represent 26 towns and villages. So I sit through a fair number of planning board meetings and I have seen seven members of a planning board each come up with their own ideas to add to the site plan. Cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. Things that haven't changed for 60 or 70 years are now going to change in site plan review. And that's one of the risks that my client is afraid of, frankly.
Ms. Finney, with respect to the argument that this is, 220 dash 32.6 is more applicable than the general requirements laid out in Article 8. What's your position on that?
I'm not taking a position tonight because I don't have it in front of me. So, and I know a lot of the members here don't have it in front of them. So my recommendation honestly is going to be to table this application until we can all have what this applicant is citing to in front of us to review and be able to actually make an informed decision.
That, that, that makes sense to me, Mr. Reigenbach, because I, I don't have that statute in front of me. I've only had and had an opportunity to contemplate and really review it 220 dash 41. And now that there are additional sections in the zone that you're citing to, to gain support, I don't believe the town has really had an opportunity to deliberate on it either. I know you submitted a supplemental memorandum this evening. I, I do take, you know, the position you take seriously. I want to give you all due deliberation. So based upon that, unless there's any further questions, is there?
I, I don't have a question. It's more of an observation, just in addition to 220 dash 41A6 that we've been talking about where, if I may restate, that your argument is that it is a conjunctive and as opposed to a list, that part B under this also mentions reduced requirements that these planning board may consider less requirements on the site plan. So I would ask the applicant to consider that in future steps.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So if there's no further questions, my position would be to make a motion to table this matter until the issues that have been raised tonight could be further fleshed out and the town would have an opportunity to respond to the issues as they've been presented tonight for the first time to my, to me as well. And I haven't had an opportunity. So I would make a motion to table.
I'd second that.
There's a motion to table and a second mission, discussion on that motion to table. Having heard that, Michigan, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was writing that.
Motion to table.
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Person Hope?
Yes. Thank you.
May I answer two questions?
Answers to two questions.
I think procedurally, not, not substantive. Procedurally, can I have access to the minutes before they're approved next month?
Will be part of the packet.
Okay, all right. Because sometimes, some towns, when they're drafted, don't let anybody have access to them until they're approved. So I wanted to make sure I could.
And second of all, you had access to the town's position? Did you have?
I didn't see it. I, I missed it.
It was an internal memo that wasn't part of the packet.
Well, how can?
So the internal memo was more of a timeline with an explanation. I mean, he has a, a, a letter with the town planner's interpretation.
Well, I'm just saying that the town planner, as opposed to the town attorney, is going to put forward an interpretation for our consideration. Why would the applicant have access to that?
He does have access to that.
Oh, he does have access. That's, I just think it would be fair in terms of him having access to what we're considering to be the town's position.
So are you talking, maybe we're talking about two different things?
I'm talking about the memo outlining the town's position.
Yeah, he can have access to that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, obviously if it's, if it's a position from the town's attorney, that would be separate.
Right.
If it's from the town's attorney and, and if the town is going to put forward any further position with. So procedurally, what I would anticipate is you're going to supplement, are you going to, do you intend to supplement with any additional?
Well, I, I misunderstood that the board didn't have access to the code and I apologize for that. I would have provided it. I wasn't trying to pull any faster or anything, but I will provide that.
Well, we have, let me be clear. We do have access to the code. Okay.
But not before you, I understand.
We have access to the one, the one provision you cited. If you want to articulate anything further with respect to that, I would encourage you to do that before the next meeting. And then the town would have an opportunity to put any response forward to the board to consider.
Preferably before the day of the meeting.
Preferably. And also to share with everybody.
I'll do it by the submission deadline today's, and I apologize for that as well. That was because I had late conversations with some of my colleagues and they said, don't not do this. So I apologize for that late submission.
No, no, I just want to make sure everybody has a fair opportunity to put their position forward. I know it's time of legal interpretation. Just want to make sure everybody's, has full opportunity to argue all their positions. And in all fairness, G. Verona was peppering us with papers. They had, seemed like they had half a, half a ton of submissions. So, okay, thank you. So I think we're all set tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Hold, hold, Mr. Chairman, he gets one year to come back or he's got to come back next month?
He's coming back next month.
He's coming back next month, yeah.
Next month?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, okay.
Is there any other further questions in this?
Make a motion.
Make a motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you. It's nice to you.